Ladies and gentlemen, before we start the meeting, I just wanted to, first I want to apologize to those folks on Zoom. Oh, I got a lot of feedback on it, but our TV is out, so we're doing this via projector. So I apologize for that. Anybody that wishes to speak, please come up to the microphone, make sure that the mic is on when you're speaking. I'm going to ask the council to please use your mics and speak loudly. I also wanted to let you know I'm the vice president of the council. Councilor Redden is home ill. So with that, I will call to order the city council meeting for April 22nd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Woodrow?
Here.
Glaser?
Here.
Remwell?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Passy?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Redden?
Next, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or changes to this evening's agenda?
We do have some changes to the agenda. Please note in the public hearing for the short-term rentals, we have two additional communications. One from Arvis Thompson, an email on concerns over short-term rentals. And then number six, Kurt and Kayla Pauli, email on STR license concerns. Then we do have two additional changes to the consent agenda. Items number 10 through 12. Item number 10 is accepting the recommendation to appoint Steve Dean to the Assistant Public Works Director position for an interim basis. Number 11, authorizing to exclude the city administrator from the Minnesota Public Employees Retirement Association. And then item number 12, which is authorizing the city of Two Harbors, Minnesota, to elect the standard allowance available under the revenue loss provision of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Are there any other additions or changes?
There were two additional committee meeting reports.
Yes.
The Georgia Management Board met, as did the Public Works Committee.
Yep, and I have those noted, as we guessed, did the HRA. Anything else? If not, I'll look for an approval to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. That motion is carried. Next, I need a motion to, first I have to make a statement. The next item is a public hearing on proposed projects and issuance of private activity bonds. This has to do with Lakeview Memorial and St. Luke's. While I am presiding over this meeting, I will not be participating in this discussion, nor will I be voting on this as I am employed by Lakeview Memorial. With that, I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and call to order the public hearing for the purpose of considering the giving host approval to the issuance of the Duluth Economic Development Authority of Revenue Obligations in one or more series under the Minnesota statute, section 469.152 through 469.1655, in order to finance, refinance, and reimburse projects. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are in the public hearing. The appearance this day will be Greg Gruber, the CEO of Lakeview Memorial Hospital. Am I correct?
Correct.
Come on up, Greg.
Good evening. I'm just here to answer any questions that the council has or the public has on our project. I gave a really quick overview. We're looking at refinancing our debt at Lakeview along with St. Luke's, so more of an obligated group refinancing for phase two of both St. Luke's and Duluth and Lakeview Two Harbors. Our project is a $6.5 million surgery expansion. So happy to answer any questions. Anybody?
Does the council have any question?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Very exciting and super excited with that renovation that you're in construction. And now, is that the second floor surgery that you're talking about?
Correct.
That was kind of in the original plans? Ah, that's great.
In the original plan, we actually shelved in the, at the second level for future development. And that, we're hoping to do it at the end of '22 or in early '23.
It's a wonderful facility for a committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You are welcome. Were there any communications with regards to this?
There was none.
Okay. Well, with that, I guess, is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this project? Anybody that would like to speak for or against? I have to ask three times. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against? Okay, I guess that was it. Thank you for coming, Greg.
Thank you.
I will now ask for a motion to adjourn this public hearing and reconvene the regular city council meeting. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion is carried. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed amendment of the city's short-term rental ordinance. Need a motion adjourned the public, the regular meeting and calling to order a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed amendment to the Two Harbors City Short-Term Rental Ordinance. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're in on the public hearing, and our first appearance will be Jennifer Servins, the community development planner regarding the proposed amendments to the city's short-term rental ordinance. Hello, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Miranda, are we good? Miranda's going to be changing the slides here. So thank you, everybody. I'm Jen Servins, the city planner. I did not know that the TV was broken, so that handout is a little microscopic. So let's get started. So here's the agenda. The zoning code review, ordinance review, ordinance update, implementation and permitting process, and a Q and A. So to start off, in 2021, the city adopted a zoning code update. And a major part of that was our B1 highway commercial district. We decided that we want to start phasing out single-family and two-family homes along Seventh Avenue. And so part of this ordinance says that if you have a residential property right now, you can always become a short-term rental or a business, or somebody can buy your house and live in there forever, as long as it stays residential. The minute that it goes to commercial or short-term rental status, it can't ever go back to residential. So the point of that is to start phasing out some of that one- and two-family homes along there and make that a true commercial highway district. And then you can find the meeting link to that. It's on this PowerPoint. We had public hearing on that. We had a lot of public informational sessions. So that link is on the website. And then next, our current ordinance for short-term rentals. The ordinance was created in May of 2018. I think that short-term rentals were something new, and they were starting to pop up, and the planning commission thought that they need to create an ordinance just to make sure that we had some plans in place in case they blossomed. And the purpose was to revisit it, revisit it as we needed to. And so that time has come. So a moratorium was issued on February 14th of 2022. And then, right now, our current regulations, we don't have a cap. There are no occupancy limits. Health inspections are not enforced to obtain a city permit. You have to have a registered agent that lives within 30 miles of the permitted property. We don't have any penalties or fine schedules. They're permitted in all zones except the industrial zone, and permits are non-transferable. When we sat down and started talking about this ordinance, our vision was to maintain housing supply and attainable housing for families, residents, and workforce, strive for balance between sustaining the community and supporting tourism, and maintain residential neighborhood character by encouraging available and attainable long-term housing in residential neighborhoods and limiting nuisances. Between 2018 and 2022, you can see by the graph, we have had a drastic increase in short-term rentals. We went from having six to having 56. The proposed ordinance, some of the major parts of this are going to be a cap. We want to cap it at 40 permits. People who have current permits are going to be exempt from this. The goal is to just reduce the number of permits to 40 through natural attrition. The zoning, we want to eliminate short-term rentals from residential areas. If you have a short-term rental in a residential area, you will be allowed to continue as long as you renew your permit in a timely manner and according to code. We have also implemented some occupancy limitations. Right now, we have some properties that have three bedrooms and are advertising that they can host 18 people. That's not safe, and we want to make sure that for parking reasons, for safety reasons, that we're having some occupancy limitations. We also are requiring a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. You also have to follow our Chapter 9 parking regulations as well. The Minnesota Department of Health inspections will be required before you get a city permit. So when you apply, you're going to submit your application saying that you have passed and you are in code compliance. We also implemented a fine structure. Permits are still non-transferable. The permit follows the owner and not the property. All renewals will be due by City Hall at 4:30 on November 1st of each year. Incomplete applications will not be accepted. If you are somebody who has a permit right now and you don't renew on time, you are going to be considered a new applicant, and you're going to be on the waitlist. We are anticipating a fee increase since there hasn't been one since 2017. Again, this proposal will not affect current short-term rental permit holders. The application process, first, you're going to decide if you want to do a short-term rental. Check with me to see what the cap is at. Two, you're going to need that state health inspection. Three, you submit your permit application, your inspection certificate, and a non-refundable fee to the city. And then allow up to 14 days for the act to be processed, and then the city will approve it or deny it. We're anticipating on having a first reading tonight, second reading May 9th, third reading May 23rd. And then there's a 30-day wait, and this ordinance would become effective on June 23rd. What you're going to need to apply, you're going to need the inspection from the Health Department, a completed application, your non-refundable fee, a site plan, just so we can verify that you're meeting the parking minimums, your Minnesota sales tax ID, or your social security number, so we know you're registered to pay lodging tax. And a completed application must be submitted. If you're missing any of the items above, we're not going to accept your application. And then there's a, Miranda? Good, thank you. And then there's some information on the lodging tax. Right now, there's a 5% lodging tax, and you can see the breakdown of that. You can find more information on that or where to register on one of those links. The Minnesota Department of Revenue defines a short-term rental as a place to stay or live. They are a form of lodging and related services. Examples of short-term rentals include homes, a portion of a home, or any other property used for temporary place to stay or live. We also have a section of our code, 2.76, which basically says if you owe any obligations to the city, whether it's property taxes, a delinquent utility bill, a fine, anything, you cannot get a permit until that is cleared up. The health inspections, that is mandated by the state, so that's not a city thing, that's a state thing. Lake County administers all of the health inspections for the state. So that's where it kind of can get a little bit confusing with the county and the state. John Widener is the health inspector, and his information is on this PowerPoint as well. So that's who you get a hold of for your inspections. And then the next slide is a map of all of the short-term rentals in town. The blue are the residential ones, and the red are located in commercial zones. I know it's a little bit hard to see, but if you see on your handout, you can see there are many clusters of them. So it might look minimal on there, but a lot of those pins have multiple layers to them. And then the next slide shows our B2 zone. And it's in dark red. So you can see how the zoning in Two Harbors was, it's a little bit off, I'll say. There's kind of no rhyme or reason in a way. So you can see that's, there's a block that's B2, there's a couple houses on one block that are in the B2 zone. The downtown is the area next to the green. So you can see how when we start talking about the zones and why we are limiting the short-term rentals to the B1 and the B2, it's because they are so spread out. They're located in residential neighborhoods. And then the next slide is the B1 zone. It's the light pink zone, and this is the west end of town. So you can see again that on the north side, there's a lot of residential neighborhoods there. And the next slide is the B1 zone on the east end. And you can again see how it's so spread out, how there's a couple houses on one block, and then it goes to the next block. Those are something we didn't touch during the zoning code update, were the boundaries, because it's a little bit more of a process than just approving the code. And then the next slide, I had some help from the local bank with this one. So we took the average market value of the short-term rental properties that we have in town. The average is 185,849. They ran some numbers. If someone were to get a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage at 4.5% interest with 20% down, and you financed 148,679, your payment with insurance and escrow is going to be $1,253. The income necessary to make that payment per month is 2,900, meaning you have to earn at least $18.13 and work 40 hours a week to make that payment. The median price of active listings in Two Harbors is 279,900. In order to make that payment, to purchase that home, you need to earn between roughly 80,000 and 93,000. And our median household income in Two Harbors is currently 58,151. So you can see that a lot of these short-term rental properties that we have are good starter homes for people. They're affordable housing. And then the next slide has just some information on there. It says Two Harbors has a population of 3,500. We have 56 short-term rental permits, which is one permit for every 63 people. Duluth has a population of 85,000. They have 80 short-term rental permits, and that's their cap. That's one permit for every 1,063 people. Grand Marais only permits short-term rentals in their B1 along Highway 61. Beaver Bay adopted a three-year interim ordinance, and that three years is coming up, and they're going to be doing a major overhaul on that ordinance. Duluth Township, population 2,000, and they just adopted a really strict short-term rental ordinance. In fact, you have to live at that property for at least nine months per year to be eligible to rent it out. I had requested a one-year moratorium on all new short-term rental permits, and the council approved a three-month moratorium, which will be up in May. Just to give you an idea of what a complex process this is, Duluth had a one-year moratorium in place before adopting a revised short-term rental ordinance. Chisholm currently has an 18-month moratorium in place. Lake County adopted a one-year moratorium in 2015, and they held a public hearing last week to implement another one-year moratorium on vacation rentals. So this is much more than a three-month process. The next slide, Miranda? Two Harbors currently has 1,340 dwellings. A little over 4% of our total housing stock is short-term rentals. A healthy rental market is 5%, and Two Harbors is at less than 2% right now. Next slide, Miranda? And this just has a little bit of information of why it's important to have permanent residents. One of them is voting. The less registered voters in Two Harbors means a softer voice in local, state, and federal government. The census played a big part in the recent redistricting process. Funding, a lot of our funding is based on the census. The census is used in determining how billions of dollars in federal funds are allocated within our community for hospitals, schools, streets, roads, other critical services. The COVID money that we received was based on the census. So of course, the less people we have here, permanent people, the less money we're going to get. We have a workforce issue. Our employers are struggling to find employees right now. And we have an obligation to support our businesses and ensure that our community has adequate housing stock. Two Harbors has an aging population, which means retirement, and dwellings are being exclusively bought and used for short-term rentals, removing housing stock that would otherwise be used for new families. The smaller population means that we have less people to volunteer in the community, less people to serve on boards and commissions and run for public office. We'll see a decline in enrollment, which we already have. ISD 381 is one of our largest employers in Lake County. Obviously, if we have less kids living here, we won't have as many jobs for those people. And we should be encouraging families to both reside and move to the city of Two Harbors. Utilities, a family of four living in Two Harbors all year round is going to generate a lot more utility revenue than just transient guests. The local support, the tourists are not the people at Super One getting groceries for their families every week. They're not filling their gas tanks, they're not using local banks or insurance companies. They're not the people supporting your teams and your Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops. There's also a safety issue. Transient renters in residential neighborhoods cause increased traffic, noise, and safety concerns, and the community has a right to feel safe knowing their neighbors and their surroundings. And overall, just a sense of community and belonging. Does the city want neighbors filled with families, or do they want weekend tourists? And then the next slide, please. Miranda, did you miss one? We go back one. There. Do this one. Okay. And so... I'm going to grab a different packet here. I am missing some of the questions here. Well, Miranda, I'm going to come over there and pull them up. Okay, so these are some of the questions that I have gotten since this started.
Turn on your mic, please.
So these are some of the questions that have come through. I'm going to answer these questions, and then we can go through for public comment, because I think this might answer a lot of them. So one, the inspections have come into kind of a, people are wondering why we're doing the inspections. The inspections have always been required per state law. The only difference is that the city wasn't requiring proof of those inspections before we would issue a permit. So those are a state thing, those aren't a city thing. Two, can all B1 and B2 zones be exempt from the cap? I would not recommend this. This is counterproductive to the purpose of this amendment. The zoning boundaries in Two Harbors are not conducive to define a separation between commercial and residential. Will short-term rentals be eliminated from residential zones? Yes. Existing short-term rental permitted properties located in residential districts will be allowed to renew as long as timely compliance with this code is followed. Are single-family homes permitted in a B1 and a B2 zone? Yes. However, right now, in our ordinance, when we did the zoning code update, there was a typo. The people who did the update are aware of this, and so we had asked them what we do to fix this, and we just have to go through a similar process. We already held public hearings on this. This was part of our Highway 61, Seventh Avenue thing. So this is just a typo. They are allowed in B1 and B2 zones. So that is going to be corrected. We were waiting for this process, so we didn't have to go through another ordinance change. Can the city allow people to convert old buildings into short-term rentals and bypass the cap? For example, Old City Hall. The purpose of this ordinance amendment is to free up housing for people to become permanent residents in the community. Those buildings and locations are perfect for long-term rental conversions. Second Avenue is an ideal location for this. How many short-term rentals are owned by local people? We have 38 of our short-term rentals that are owned by local people. Can the council extend the moratorium? No. Can the city allow short-term rentals for exempt events? No. We have no ability to regulate this, and health inspections are required even if you're only going to rent for one night per year. Our permitting process is for the safety of all residents. Nine, how many lodging facilities are currently available for tourists in Two Harbors? And I don't, you probably can't see too good up there, but I have a list. The Country Inn has 47 guest rooms, American 45, Vine and Ranches 7, Voyagers 8, Viking 10, Grand Superior Lodge has 150, and our own campground can host 146 sites. So we have 267 hotel rooms available, 146 camping sites, RVs and tents, and 56 short-term rentals. Does the city have the right to regulate short-term rentals? Yes. According to state statute 462, 357, we have the right to regulate zoning. And the inspections are regulated by the Minnesota Department of Health, so those are non-optional. I've heard that short-term rentals are considered businesses. And why do they have such strict regulations and other businesses don't? Well, our businesses in town have very strict regulations. Many of them have to have conditional use permits to be located where they are. They have to follow strict sign ordinances. They have to pull permits for that. They have off-street parking regulations. They have occupancy limitations. They are licensed, many of them. We have design standards that we just implemented in June of 2021, meaning you have to have your building made of certain materials. You have to have the majority of it have glass on the front. They also pay commercial utility rates and commercial property taxes. And city code, including our zoning regulations and building code, are in place to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. 12, short-term rentals increase property values and reduce blighted properties. This is a list of all of our building permits since 2018, well through 2021. In 2021, we had five, six, seven, eight, we had eight, eight building permits, two conversions for short-term rentals, three new roofs, one new roof on the garage, and a wraparound deck, and new siding. The total construction value was $109,100. Our overall construction value for the entire city in 2021 was $2,795,343. So short-term rentals made up 0.04% of this total. In 2020, we had four permits issued, three new roofs on houses, and one new windows. The value, $27,787. The overall construction value for the entire city in 2020 was roughly $2.1 million. Short-term rentals made up 0.1% of this total. In 2019, three new roofs, one new garage, one siding, and one new front steps. Total construction value, $46,834. The overall construction value for the entire city in 2019 was $14,310,184. So that made, short-term rentals made up 3/10ths of this total, 3/10ths percent of this total. In 2018, we had one new roof on a house, $4,500 value. The total construction for all of the city in 2018 was $3.3 million roughly, so short-term rentals made up 1/10th percent of this total. So although people are putting money into the properties, you can see it's a very, very, very small chunk of what the city actually does for building permits every year. 13, I've gotten a question about light garbage and noise, and why are short-term rentals being held to maybe a different standard when it comes to garbage? I'm not sure kind of where this one was going, but nobody within city limits should have blighted properties or excessive noise, as per city code, Chapter 10, Public Protection, Crimes, and Offenses. This is not subjective to short-term rentals. City code violations are considered a misdemeanor and are a criminal offense punishable by law. Number 14, can the city decide to discontinue permitted short-term rentals altogether and implement a sunset on all residential short-term rentals? Yes. Short-term rentals are in interim use. The city can discontinue them at any time, which is why I cringe a little bit when people are telling me that they can't make a mortgage payment unless they can do a short-term rental there, because at any time, this council or another council could say, we don't want them anymore. And you don't have a choice. 15, somebody said the new regulations are extreme, and how will the city enforce these if we don't have the staff to enforce them now? And that's an excellent point. It's even more reason to reduce the number of permits the city issues. The city desires to manage short-term rentals and not banish them. 16, how will we know if there's a short-term rental in our neighborhood? I will work with city clerk Nordin and city attorney Costley, and we'll add short-term rental property information in accordance with data practice laws to the city website. This will be updated as permits are issued, not renewed or revoked. And 17, this was a question that I got. Does the public have the option to take this to a referendum, should the council vote against this tonight? And the answer is yes. And in summary, my recommendation is for the council to approve the amended ordinance and... as is. This amendment was recommended by the Planning Commission, a citizen-appointed commission. And that concludes the presentation. And so we could entertain any questions.
Does the council have questions for, um, Ms. Germs? Okay, um, then I'm going to go on to Communications, and first is, um, Chelsea Schultz. She has requested to speak at the public hearing.
Thank you. Chelsea Schultz, five to Eighth Avenue. Thank you so much for your time. I've shared multiple times to the Planning and Zoning Committee regarding short-term rentals. Talked about how short-term renting has given us the funds needed to fix up neglected properties in our community. Talked about how we've been able to create places of peace for those who are trying to come and visit our community. I've shared how we help local families by providing jobs that help support over twenty families in our community. We've talked about the national housing shortage, how short-term rentals that could otherwise house a family, which are places with two or more bedrooms. So a family of mom, dad, kids make up less than one-point-six percent of the current short-term rentals in our community. We've talked about the lack of non-initial family homes in our community, how Two Harbors is pretty much a community of starter homes. I've urged the committee to focus on how to create more housing, offered suggestions, and even offered to have conversations about how we can work together to do that. And I'll be happy to discuss any of those things further with anyone in this room. But for the sake of time, today I want to talk about the current proposed ordinance. As written, the ordinance gives no exceptions to those who want to rent out their primary residence as a means of extra income. Even Duluth does this. As someone who has spent much of my adult life helping people in poverty, these are people that are living in a house, that want to create a better financial situation for their family. What does the city gain by not allowing those living in their home to rent it out if they choose? The house is already occupied. It's not going to another family. Why should properties already occupied by a family be included in the total number cap? Why should these families be denied the opportunity to make some additional income if they choose because their home is in the wrong zone? All neglecting this type of exception does is take yet another potential opportunity away from families trying to create something better for themselves. Is that really the goal? Next, just a few things that I would like clarification. Short-term rentals are being treated as, by the city, as businesses. They are taxed as such, they are regulated as such, we pay homeowner's insurance as such. However, the non-transferable piece and proposed zoning requirements do not allow the owner to sell the business as such. Previously, this wasn't an issue, as the new owner could have applied for their own permit on the property. However, with the proposed cap and changes only allowing short-term rentals in business districts, those options are either completely impossible, or at the bare minimum yearly so. Thus, if a current owner needed to sell a house for any reason, they lose their investment as a business. And make no mistake, it takes a lot more than buying a house to have a successful short-term rental. So I would like to know if the city is going to do short-term rentals as businesses or not. Second, I'd like to see the purpose of the proposed cap. We keep hearing that those who don't want houses to be used for short-term rentals, they don't want houses to be used for short-term rentals that could otherwise be used for family. The proposed ordinance states that new permits will only be given in B1 and B2 zoned areas, as we talked about the phasing out of red, of current residences, especially on the Seventh Avenue, which took a lot of families, a lot of houses away from families if it's converted. So if there's already zoning laws in place that are going to limit the number of short-term rentals, what is the purpose of the cap? When investors look for a place to go, they look at how a city interacts with business owners. The more red tape, the more layers, the less appealing, and they go elsewhere. Are we open to growing or not? Are we going to cap it? Are we going to zone it? All for having some kind of changes to the ordinance, but it seems like they're just adding layer upon layer. I've heard it said multiple times throughout this process that we can always change it, we can always go back, we can always readjust, but isn't that what we're trying to do right now? Do we really want to go through this whole process again and waste more time, more money, not getting new houses in Two Harbors to go back and fix what we didn't do right the first time? Or do we just want to listen to the community and make some adjustments so that we can make sure that our community continues to grow and to thrive and to be a great place for people to live and to visit?
Is there anybody else from the audience that wanted to speak up this time? Or is it just the Communications?
Counselor Blaser, can I just mention something? Because I forgot to say this during the hearing. So when I talked about Seventh Avenue, Seventh Avenue would be exempt from the cap. So right now, how you can't, you have a residential place and you have converted it to a short-term rental, you can't revert back to a residential property. That's what the current code says, that's our zoning code. So I have written in, there's, it's in red on your, in your packet, and it says that properties along Seventh Avenue are exempt from the cap. So if you already have a short-term rental there, your only options are to sell it to someone else for a short-term rental or convert it to a business. And so I wanted to make those properties along Seventh Avenue exempt from that cap, so they do have the option to sell their home, and it can become a short-term rental, just as it is right now, and they will get a permit. We, I just made that little exception because those people already have a restriction in place from our zoning code update. Sorry, thank you.
I guess I'm just gonna go along with the agenda here. The next item is, um, an email from Sandra Keller regarding short-term rentals. Do we need to read those in for the public?
It was my understanding that no, we do not.
Okay, so we have that letter. Uh, we have a letter from the Lake Superior Realtors Association on concerns over proposed ordinances on short-term rentals. We've got a letter from Chad and Macy Nordine that was emailed to reconsider the proposed ordinance. We had another one from Arvis Thompson, an email of concerns, and one from Kurt and Kaylee, Kayla, Holly, um, also with regards to that. At this point, is there anybody that would like to speak against what we've had? I'll take, uh, let's start back there. You can come to the podium, you would have to give your name and your address, please use the mic.
And I want to speak in favor of the proposed changes, so.
I heard the word against and got worried. Hello? Is this on? I think so. So, uh, my name is Kaitlin Cobbs, and I am here as a representative of North Shore Horizons. So I'm gonna give you their address. If you'd like mine as well, I can give that to you. So their address is seven twenty-seven, Second Avenue, Two Harbors, minus seven fourteen, Second Avenue, Two Harbors. So I am the Housing Coordinator with North Shore Horizons. I'm also a domestic violence and sexual assault advocate, though I'm here speaking as my housing coordinator role. I want to take a bit and talk about housing issues, which I know is why we're here, but how short-term rentals affect them, and what I see from talking to folks daily about housing. Last year, North Shore Horizons worked with over four hundred individuals, and I would say most of them were in search of housing in some capacity. Domestic violence is the number-one reason for homelessness among women and families, nationwide, anywhere you go. The intersection of domestic violence, homelessness, housing insecurity is undeniable. Lack of safe and affordable housing is the number-one hurdle for survivors of both domestic violence and sexual assault. You should know, long-term housing is essential for victims of domestic violence. Eighty-four percent of survivors in domestic violence shelters report that they need help finding affordable housing. The New Beginnings Program at North Shore Horizons, which can house six families of multiple-sized units, currently has a waitlist of over twenty families long. Fifteen of those families are from Two Harbors and the Lake County area. When I start talking to a family about housing, I have less than a handful of options to start, when I start talking about income-based housing specifically. All housing buildings in Two Harbors have waitlists of their own, so people wanting to get out now, get out soon, it doesn't happen. My next step is to start talking about other rentals in the area. I have a list of possible landlords and locations, and the list is one page long, front and back. It's not very long. And when we start going through that list, I start taking names off really rapidly. This person's full. This one doesn't rent to long-term rentals anymore. This one doesn't rent at all. This person doesn't own that anymore. We start crossing those names off the list quickly. After we do that, our next option is to talk about where else do we go? You have to live somewhere, where is it gonna be? And we talk about Duluth. And I can tell you that it's almost always the last choice of a family in Two Harbors to go to Duluth. It means a change in schools, a change in work, as they can no longer afford to work in Two Harbors and live in Duluth. It means a loss of a support system, family, friends. And before I keep going, you might think I'm being a bit dramatic, right? Duluth is only thirty miles away. It's not that far. But I can tell you that with limited public transportation, kids to take care of, a job to have, possible abuser who might be stalking, harassing, taking someone to court, Duluth might as well be three million miles away for these families. Transportation is the big part of that. Can't go to work when we only have one bus a week. When a family is forced to leave Two Harbors due to lack of housing, whether it be purchasing or renting a home, it has consequences that reverberate throughout this community. It's felt well beyond housing. Lack of housing translates to lack of school enrollment, lack of business owners, lack of employees to work. Pretty soon, our subways are closed Mondays. I don't know if anybody remembers that. There weren't enough people to work. And I can tell you that nobody is gonna live in Duluth and drive up here to work at a subway. Good job or not, you can't afford it, especially when you can work at a subway in Duluth. Same job, less travel time. Nobody's shopping at the local hardware store or visiting our farmer's market. Folks who work in this town are being priced out of living in this town. Do you want to have people come to Two Harbors to vacation? We also have people, have to have people willing to work in Two Harbors. We know that short-term rentals inflate housing costs, whether it's rental or ownership. It's been studied and proven time and time again. HUD, or the Housing Urban Development, is a government agency, and it creates a fair-market rental rate. This fair-market rental rate is released for each county each year, and it uses a specific formula that provides rental assistance guidelines for those of us who use assistance programs. It lists a fair-market rental value on an apartment. They use previous rental rates, rates, supply of housing, and other factors in this determination, including income of the surrounding county. Many agencies use this as a point of rental subsidies and funding. For a one-bedroom apartment in Lake County, the fair-market rental rate is six hundred and eighty dollars for a one-bedroom apartment. I can tell you after a quick Google Craigslist search, which I do every day at work, every morning, that's one of my first steps, get on Craigslist, see what we have. I found a few available one-bedroom apartments, which doesn't always happen for me. And I can tell you that their rents were listed at nine seventy-five, eleven hundred, and twelve hundred, not included utilities. And we know that when you start renting and talking about utilities, in some of these old houses, we're looking at three hundred dollars a month, so add that on to our rental costs. Not a single apartment was close to that fair-market rent. And while there may be few and far apartment, apartments available to rent, they're priced out of anything anyone in Lake County can afford. Maybe not anyone, but a majority of us. And I just note, none of them were listed when I checked back a week later. As someone who both manages housing and helps other folks find housing, I think I'm in a unique position to see this issue from many angles. I am, in essence, partly a landlord. I manage those six units, I help people move in, I help them move out, I do the leasing documents, I see it all. And the question I hear from many other landlords is, and C, a renter was destructive. They didn't follow the rules, they didn't pay their rent, they didn't do this or that. And I know this struggle. It can be incredibly frustrating and disappointing to see housing you spent time, money, effort, poured your heart and soul into, be left a mess, or left unpaid, or left destroyed. But to this argument, I would counter. There are just as many folks who are bad short-term renters. They are destructive, they didn't follow the rules, they throw parties, they broker-ruin furnishings. People are people. You're gonna get some good renters, short or long-term, and you're gonna get some you wish you hadn't had. They don't, the big difference I want to point out between these short-term folks who don't live here, they want to come here and vacation because it's beautiful, I get it, but they don't have a stake in our community. They don't care if the neighbors are kept up all night due to a party, they don't care if the front lawn is covered in cans, or your neighbor's car is dinged because they backed out of the driveway too fast. I understand that short-term rentals are valuable and important to our economy. I don't want to squash their growth and the profit that they're seeing from these. I've used them myself. If you ever go to Ireland, you can rent a castle on Airbnb. I recommend it, it's pretty cool. I encourage the city council to act quickly to solidify this ordinance, particularly this cap on short-term rentals. All things are good in moderation, and this town is in need of some short-term rental moderation. I'm encouraging speed, not because I want this to be a rush process, I think it affects a lot of people, a lot of business, a lot of lives, but I'm concerned that there are folks waiting for this moratorium to end and are gonna quickly move to access that gap in time to increase short-term rentals in a short amount of time in Two Harbors before we can get this ordinance in place, putting even more of a strain on local households. The majority of the burden that is felt through these short-term rentals is low-income and moderate-income families. And Jennifer said it correctly when she said, "What do you want Two Harbors to be?" I want people to vacation here. It's gorgeous, it's beautiful, but I also want it to be a good place to live, to raise a family, to support. So I hope that by limiting the current number of permits and moving forward with the ordinance, we can give families in this community who rent and who want to own a home, some breathing room to make this community livable for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I have a speaker back in here, back there.
Holly Dangelhoff, three twenty-two, Second Avenue, thank you. I do have one question. We have this, if this is accepted tonight, and it's here for screening, and it doesn't go into effect until June twenty-third, in the meantime, what happens? Because the moratorium goes off on the fourteenth of May, fifteenth of May?
Yep, correct, Holly. And so, um, being that the health inspector is so far behind right now, even if the moratorium expires, between the time that this new ordinance would take effect, I don't anticipate anyone is gonna get a certificate of inspection to turn it to the city in that amount of time.
Okay.
He still is getting caught up on other ones, and I, he'll put him in the order that he gets them, and I don't see that happening.
Okay. So the ones, the ones that are listed now as permits, those are not, they don't necessarily have their certificate?
Correct.
Okay. So, because I was wondering, we've got the festival, we have the festival sale coming up, sorry, I have a heavy facial spasm, so I'm not looking at you, my face just does this on its own, I can't help. Anyway, what I would like to say is, we live in a neighborhood that we want to stay in neighborhood, and short-term rentals are businesses, I think all businesses, the permits, and if they get a new owner, they have to apply for a new permit. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think that business have a requirement.
Yes, every new business owner would require a new permit. So what we have is, we've got... So what we have is, we've got fifty-six permits, and currently forty of those are in residential areas. What you basically have is hotels in residential areas. And if somebody said, "I wanna put a Marriott in a residential area," would you say yes to that? I, I, I don't see that happening. But these are essentially the same thing, where you have people coming and going, and you don't know who they are. We have, um, twenty-five of those permits that are in residential areas in the east, you know, this downtown neighborhood. Twenty-five of them. They're all over the place. And I do know that there are some waiting, one of them right behind us, to get a permit. And so they will just explode, especially with this festival sale coming in, if you don't do something. Right now, we have, you talked about the ratio in Duluth to, to Harbors. If we had the same ratio of population to permits, we would have three in Two Harbors. So forty as a cap is a pretty generous cap, I think. And keeping them out of a residential area makes sense, because you wouldn't put hotels in residential area. This has affected those of us who live here, I'm sure everybody got their property tax valuation. So I talked to, um, Noah down at the, um, at the Lake County Assessors. This is absolutely driven by people who come in, who have a lot more money than the people in this area, and spend, um, twenty to forty or more thousand dollars above list to pay cash for homes that they're not going to live in, and they use for short-term rentals. Sometimes vacation homes, but a lot of them short-term rentals. There's a house on one hundred and seven, um, one oh seven South Avenue, right kitty-corner from the waste treatment plant. That house has an estimated market value at the assessors of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That house sold last May for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it's a short-term rental. All of those things are bringing our valuations up. The average for the city is, um, thirty-five percent. Ours went up thirty-two and a half percent. And what that means to us is not only increased taxes, but decreased, um, homestead exclusions. Homestead exclusions cap at the top level at seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars. After that, they keep going down. We just lost five thousand dollars on our homestead exclusion because they put our, the price of our house up fifty-eight thousand dollars in a year, and we haven't done anything to it. We fixed it up before, but that was all covered, and now it's a whole new thing. So I think the cap is reasonable. I, I think that it's, um, you're pricing the people who live in Two Harbors right out of their homes to pay taxes on this kind of, um, housing value. And you need to consider that for having a community. So I would really, really recommend that, encourage you to put this in place, because if this moratorium goes off and John catches up, they are going to be everywhere. Thank you.
Other speakers, then, uh, the gentleman in the back row.
David, I'm Dwayne Wagner, thirteen twenty-seven Harbor Hills Drive. Stating the obvious, Two Harbors is a gateway to nature's best effort. Beautiful lakes, huge forests, and creatures living here. Bear, deer, moose, wolf are just a few examples. We experience seasonal changes. Warm summers, colorful falls, cold and snowy winters. Because of the natural benefits we enjoy, hunting, fishing, biking, the list goes on, snowmobiling, rock climbing, just to mention a few. Minnesota's Arrowhead is inviting, a place to enjoy. Two Harbors is a place we call home. We live here. We have great schools, medical care, and access to many amenities. Two Harbors is a community. Our neighborhoods are important. They are an integral part of what makes Two Harbors Two Harbors. Since its inception in two thousand eight, the Home Share Platform has been growing rapidly for a small startup of three students to a thirty billion dollar a year profit-making organization. And that's twenty seventeen figures. With over three million listings in a hundred and ninety countries and sixty-five thousand cities, and more rooms available than any of the major hotel chains that include Hilton, Intercontinental, and Marriott. It's not a cottage industry. It's well-funded and very organized. Expedia Group, which owns Verbo and HomeAway, has a huge stake in the success and growth of STRs everywhere. For the backers of STRs, there is much to gain. For the residents of Two Harbors, there is much to lose. This ordinance invites a multitude of opinions and points of view. Is this an attempt to place unnecessary restrictions upon entrepreneurs? Is this an attempt to find a balance for STR industry and local municipalities to exist? There are several ways to handle STRs' growth. Do nothing, community-wide moratorium, or developing a method considering this industry's growth alongside the needs of the community and neighborhoods. The density and growth of STRs in Two Harbors has been referred to as the Wild West of hospitality, the hospitality industry. Compared to Duluth, a community of eighty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, last census, there is one STR per one thousand seventy-three residents. Two Harbors, a community of three thousand five hundred and twenty-five, there is one STR per sixty-five residents. Huge density. If these numbers are not adjusted properly, there will be devastating effect upon Two Harbors. Evaluations keep going up. Our taxes will keep going up. Our insurance rates will keep going up. Can locals afford them? This ordinance addresses a method for those adjustments. STRs are not the evil empire. They are a method of creating income. Yet, if not unreg, if not regulated, this industry can do great damage to a community. The average wage-earning family cannot compete for a home when prices are driven so high families cannot live there. We lose families. We lose neighborhoods. We will lose our community. The argument that this ordinance is big government, retarding the growth, is at best shallow. There are times when restrictions and rules are necessary. Ask yourself why the traffic is forced to slow down when entering Two Harbors. It's not sixty-five miles an hour. It's thirty-five miles an hour. It's the law. It's enforceable. It's for the community's safety. The same is true for the need to regulate the STR industry in Two Harbors, promoting safe, affordable housing, consider growth, and regulation that is enforceable. This council has an ordinance before it that takes the initial steps in creating a balanced atmosphere for STRs and neighborhoods. I urge the members to vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Are there other people that wish to address the council? Aunt Tom, Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Oddly enough, I'll be brief. My name is Tom Porter. I live in town here. I'm retired from the railroad. Were thirty-two years in the tractor department.
We need your address.
Um, this town is, pardon?
We need your address.
Oh, eight fourteen Fifth Avenue. This town has lost about a hundred and ten people in the last few years. Got no place for them to live. There are fifty-three, fifty-six short-term rentals. Fifty of those would house those people that we lost. We cannot regain the population that we lost because of those short-term rentals. There are businesses, growing, thriving businesses, retail enterprises, manufacturing enterprises in this town right now who cannot get the employees they need because there's no place for those employees to live. We need this cap. We need to address this runaway enterprise. Thank you.
Lou, you over there?
My name is Kathy Glenn. I live at five twenty Laurel Lane. I'm for a balanced system as far as short-term rentals. I know people think I'm against them totally, but I'm not. But this ha, this community and this council has to really get involved in getting some apartments in this town and starter homes for people to buy. Otherwise, we're gonna keep losing people, and we will be a community of retirement people or elderly people. And that's it. All the young people. I know them, young people that would love to buy a house here, but they bought in Duluth instead because they couldn't afford one or find one here. And if the community doesn't step out, step up, and solve this problem, we're gonna continue this problem. And why would a company, a big industry, want to establish a business here if their employees can't find a place to live? I mean, it's just not gonna happen. So the city will not grow. It'll stagnate. That's all.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, is there anybody else that wants to speak? One more.
Hello. My name's Kurt Polly. Four oh three Second Avenue. This is my wife Kayla and my son Oliver. They're coming up as well. But, um, yeah, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the ordinance. Uh, I'm against the ordinance in some ways. I'm not against the total cap. But, um, I'm gonna talk about a personal situation I had first. Um, last year, we bought a property in March, got a short-term rental permit. It was great. We rented it out. We used it as a vacation property. We rented it out when we're not there. Middle of October, we sent in our paperwork and our renewal, as we should. And, and then time passes. We thought we were all good. A few weeks ago, we contacted the development planner. She says, about the health inspection, we contacted her. She says, "No, Kurt, you don't have a permit." I said, "Excuse me?" We sent in our permit. We sent in our paperwork. We sent in our money. How did we not have this application? When we first requested a permit back in April, um, we sent in that occasion, or nothing back. Nothing was responded back. I talked to a couple other short-term rental holders in town. You know what they told me? They said, "Kurt, you don't get anything back. You don't get a confirmation. You don't get a receipt. You don't get anything back proving that you got a rental." So we, we were okay with it. We sent in our paperwork, and we didn't hear back. We thought we were approved. So a few weeks ago, we were told we didn't have a permit. So that is the complete problem with this, is there's no accountability. There's no communication. And, um, here we are, devastated. My wife and I wanna move up here someday. We have two mortgages right now, one in Two Har, Two Harbors, right here on Second Avenue, one in the Twin Cities. And, and now we're stuck. We could pay for the second mortgage by doing short-term rentals, but now it's gonna be a lot harder to do that. So, um, you know, you'll probably see me again at the next meeting, and the meeting after that, asking for an exception or something of that nature, because we sent in our paperwork. We done everything by the book. And it got lost in the mail. It got lost in the office or something, but we did everything, and we have no recourse to that. So, so that's my personal situation. And, and I know since there's a moratorium in place, I can't ask you guys to make an exemption on that right now, can I? No. Okay, okay. So you'll probably hear from me again, but that's my personal situation, something very unfortunate that happened. I tried to talk to the development planner, and I was given no leeway because of moratorium in place. But if there was more communication, like reminders or updates or things like that, this wouldn't have ever happened. So that's, so I guess I'll go right into it. There's, there's zero communication from the city in terms of these ordinances, in terms of these changes that are happening. Yes, there's an address posted on the website, on the local newspaper, but there is zero email sent out, or zero anything sent out in the mail to people to show that there's gonna be a change in these ordinances. So I think there'd be a lot more people here speaking in favor of short-term rentals if there were that communication. But, you know, I live in the Twin Cities. I found out about these changes through a Facebook group, and that's it. So that was very unfortunate to me. But yeah, another point that I wanna make is there's a housing shortage nationwide. March, year over year, their housing inventory is down eighteen point six percent in the whole country. It's not because of short-term rentals. It's because of a multitude of factors. And so I think this city owes itself to have a, a housing study done. The last housing study done was in two thousand seventeen, as I'm aware of. And that study in two thousand seventeen said there needs to be two thousand, or seven hundred and seven new houses needed. Okay? Fifty-eight percent of those are age-restricted senior housing that should be managed by an association, is what it said. So I'm not, so to me, short-term rentals, Airbnb is the easy villain, the easy thing to look after. Producing it by seventeen is not gonna make a dent in the seven hundred and seven houses we need in this community. And I think there needs to be apartments built, tax breaks given to developers to build single-family homes. A big change needs to happen. It can't just be this easy villain, this seventeen permits. What's that gonna do? It's gonna have a small, small effect on what's going on in this town. And we, we wanna live up here permanently someday. We, we bought this house. We, when we're not here, it doesn't say vacant. It says rented. Tourists come, spend money. We give them a guide of local places to go, and they spend their money at all those places. And I don't know how many thousands I spent at the hardware store myself fixing up my place. They know me there well, you know, so. I, I have a list of things here to talk about, and a lot of them have been talked over. Like Chelsea talked about how you can't rent out a portion of your primary residence. I think that's a problem written in the code, or in the ordinance. If you live there, going around a bedroom, which you can't do in Airbnb, you should be able to. That's gonna take away zero housing stock from anyone. And there's another thing. Two parking spots per Airbnb. What if it's a one-bedroom Airbnb? Why would you need two parking spots? It should be on a ratio of how many bedrooms are in that Airbnb. So that's another issue there is. There's another section that says, um, there's a max occupancy of ten people per Airbnb. But if you say, it says, there's a, you can have a maximum of four bedrooms. You take that, times two, that's eight, plus one, that's nine. And that's how they calculate. So it says, if you use your calculation, it says you can have a total of nine, total occupancy, but then it says there's a max of ten. So the math doesn't add up in the way the ordinance is written. So there's typos, things like that of that nature that drive me crazy, and it should be more well-thought-out. So there's also things like the local agent. The local agent should be described in the ordinance. What, what is their duties? What are they going to do? And the ordinance amendment there is now, all it is is in the definitions. The definition has something about a local agent. There's nothing else about a local agent in the whole ordinance. So what are we supposed to do? Just look off the permit? In the permit application, you get that packet, it says enclosed is a section for the local agent. There's nothing enclosed. There's, there's nothing to add information about a local agent. So, so these are some of the things I have against it, you know. I, I'm all opposed for a cap, you know. Like personally, if you ask me, I think there should be a cap of like a hundred. But that's just my personal opinion. I think when you cut off tourism, you cut off the hand that feeds your area. And it's, 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 it's hard. I know that, um, it's hard to get a long-term rent here in town. That is difficult, you know. There could be something around that, whether you control how many short-term rentals one person has versus long-term rentals, you know, there's other things you can do, you know. And you could have an increase, you could have a cap, and you're gonna increase per year based on how, how many houses were built per year, and increase that cap. That's what Duluth does, and they have something in that nature as well, so. Yeah. Do you have anything to say, Kayla?
I think you've covered it. But yeah, I mean, we love the community up here, and we love to spend time here. Just running it out is a way to share that with other people. and help us enjoy our place too.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I just touch on that real quick? I've been in contact with Kirk a lot, and I just think, we've had long conversations, and I think his is a rare exception where I think we should grant him his permit, I think it got lost in the mail, and it really puts him in a hard position to, I've had long conversations and emails with him, and so, that's my opinion, and like I said, I told him to continue to be in contact with me, but I think we should help him out on this one, because saying it's for an errand service stands for it, just got lost in the mail, so, I mean, I'm for helping these guys out. They want to come to the community and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Was there one more person over on this side that wanted to speak?
No.
She did great.
Katya Gordon, 133 Third Avenue? Just want to speak really briefly and say, it seems to me a practical thing would be that the rentals that we do have are owned by local people. I mean, to me, it's a whole different thing, a family in Two Harbors trying to make money in Two Harbors versus a corporation coming from the outside and wanting to do a bunch of things, like, so is there a way to prioritize that? That's my own comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Katya, where do you live?
133 Third Avenue.
You needed that, right?
I think she said it.
Oh, okay.
What are you trying to get me here?
Nah, you know, great energy, hello. Anyways, my name is Suzie Rosette, I live at 713 12th Avenue, and I just want to say, wow Kirk, I think you should just move up here, I mean, you'd be a great addition to any commission here to, you know, dot those i's and t's and then the problem solved, you know? So, at any rate, I can see everybody's positioning here, but I want to, first of all, thank Planning and Zoning for working hard on the ordinance, and Jennifer, and the attorney for going through all of the work. I have had an opportunity to skim through it, not actually skim through it, but scan through it and, you know, look at all the different provisions in there, and I can tell that you worked really hard, and I want to thank you for that because I really did not think that we would get this far this soon, and I'm very grateful for that, not only to them, but to the council for moving through everything. But for this ordinance to pass would mean a step in a right direction. The cap is appropriate, like I've said before, I don't have a problem with STRs, I just have a problem when it's out of balance. And I think the cap number is a nice cap number, they've provided all of the criteria that it will take to get to the number that they want, and it provides for a safer and more stable neighborhood, and we're kind of putting a tourniquet on all this housing stuff in a huge way so that we have time to look at development, other housing options, building, and it keeps us in a breathing mode until, you know, more expansions happen. There's been several excellent presentations tonight, and I would just like to encourage you guys to adopt this ordinance, vote to adopt it, and let's get moving on some housing here in town, that's, that sounds great to me. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you. Is there one more? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I need to take a bathroom break. I really like to listen to all these, if it takes five minutes, or I need to say a break, doesn't matter.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue? If there isn't, if there isn't, then I think we've heard everybody's comments and I appreciate everybody taking time to address the council. This is on our agenda, it is number two under the new business, though I'm sure the council will have some additional discussion, but with that, I'd like to move on to the rest of our agenda. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the Two Harbor City Council.
So?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we will take a 15-minute break. We are back in the regular part of the city council meeting, and the first is appearances. This evening, we have Katya Gordon talking about Two Harbors and meeting for more.
Do I go, or do I wait?
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay. Well, I'll say it again, my name's Katya Gordon, I live at 133 Third Avenue, and I know I just have three minutes. Thank you for your commitment to public service, just want to start by saying that. Also that I'm a reporter for the Lake County Press, but I'm here as a private resident, not as a reporter or anything like that. I have in my hand a proposal to you, the mayor and the city council, and it's way too much to explain in three minutes, but in essence, this is a proposal for you and the citizens of Two Harbors to engage in a restorative process. And I'm going to just read a little bit about this proposal because restorative circles are known for having these outcomes. Participants feel heard, participants feel like they are part of the solution, solutions are more creative and crafted to incorporate multiple interests, solutions are more likely to be followed, accountability is less punitive, accountability measures are more likely to be followed, people understand each other better, and community capacity for constructive response to conflict increases. And, I don't know, I just think we can pretty much all agree that these would be great outcomes for our city. One thing I forgot to say in the proposal is that I'm a professional circle peeper, but this would be, this is like a pro bono offer, this is not something that, there won't be any fees associated with this. And if it turns out that you are interested in this, but you would rather have an outsider be a facilitator, I know some excellent circle people in Duluth also. Yeah, I just, now that I have a minute and a half, I feel like I want to fill it up, but I think I've said everything I need to say. I'm going to hand you these proposals so that you each get one, and I would love, I'm available for the next few weeks to discuss it with you, I think it might take a little time for, to people to digest this and think about it. But I think, you know, Two Harbors has, everyone here, I think, would agree that we have such enormous potential in this city and so many good things going on, and this is an opportunity to really deal with the recent conflict of interest, stuff going on, and a lot of the stuff going on, to really have open, honest, and safe discussions in a way that we haven't had before, so that we can move forward in a good way. And I'm really committed to helping that happen if you are interested. So here's the proposal.
Thank you. There's just one topic. Okay, the next appearance is Todd Ryan to update the council on the petition after.
My name is Todd Rawning, I live at 130 South Avenue. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of a group of your fellow community members, your constituents. This group formed around a set of shared concerns regarding our mayor's actions while in office. Over a period of months, the magnitude of these concerns increased with each new revelation regarding what can only be considered improper conduct by an elected official. This group, now calling itself the Resign or Recall Committee, began looking at the city's charter, code, and policies. Its members began attending or tuning into council meetings and reaching out to their respective representatives on the city council. We also started discussing these issues with friends and neighbors and really listened to what they had to say. We soon learned that the concerns which had brought us together were not ours alone, but were widely shared across our community. As we looked at the city charter, we learned what our options were to seek redress of our well-justified apprehensions with Mayor Swanson's conduct. The charter language is clear and unambiguous. It provides a straightforward process for citizens to seek the recall of an elected official. The Resign or Recall Committee has carefully followed the process, step by step, as it appears in our city charter. We have held petition signing events, we've canvassed the communities, we've gathered just north of 950 signatures to date, more than double the amount of signatures required to compel the scheduling of a recall election. We've followed the rules, we've done everything by the book, we'll be submitting our petition certificate in the next few days. There's been much written about in several presentations made before this council, seeking to mischaracterize the motives behind our committee. We've been described as hateful, petty, partisan, or somehow just jealous of the mayor's success. None of these are true, of course, these are projections. Now, as our group name reflects, our great preference would be for Mr. Swanson to see what so many in Two Harbors do, that his actions were inappropriate, and to save the community from further tumult and distraction, he could simply choose to resign his office within the allotted timeframe. If he does not, then the process will continue to play out and the voters will ultimately decide his fate in a special election. Our group, in the best traditions of civic engagement and the democratic process, came together because of shared concerns about our mayor's actions. These concerns were found out and shared widely across the community. Our concerns were validated by the opinion of our own city attorney, who found clear violations of city code and policies in the mayor's actions. Now, we are a very diverse group, members of different ages, gender, occupation, and political affiliation. Close telling, perhaps, are the many members of our group and petition signatories who are former Chris Swanson supporters and voters, even they have had enough. Chris, you've lost the trust, it cannot be restored. We respectfully ask you to resign. If you do not, please know that we are committed to work for your removal from office. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, moving on. Joel Dying has the administrator's report.
Thank you. Thank you. Been on the job now for seven days, so I've been spending a lot of that time getting to know the community, staff, elected officials, and others in the community. One of the main projects I've been working on, of course, is to get the ball rolling on hiring a new city administrator, so we're looking at the timeline that would have somebody on board by the end of August. Personnel committee will be meeting this week to go over some of the details before we start the advertising, so we hope to, like I said, keep that ball rolling. Other than that, just been working on the day-to-day things that pop up on my email on my desk and trying to fill in the gap until we get somebody on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim Posley, attorney.
You know, I don't have anything, really. What's on here is a follow-up on a memorandum of opinion that I presented, I don't know what it was, a month ago. I don't have anything I want to add to that. So there it sits. Basically, your options are do nothing, you can pass a resolution seeking a censure, but that's it. What Mr. Rawning says is true. We'll be doing this at a future meeting anyways, that's all. I have no request for action, I have a report.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to commi, hold on, committee reports. I'm going to let Public Works go first.
All right. Recently, the county issued RFPs for the design on Fifth Street and the 500 block of Worth Avenue, then a three, whatever it was, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, on Sixth Avenue there. Those will be, they did that, the proposal will begin by April 11th and then board it on April 26th. There'll be a joint powers agreement with the city if we decide to pull the trigger on that by May. The numbers I got is the county was going to spend $9 million on this project, and then the city will be $6 million over, that's also a two-year project. And then, we talked about paving some of the campground, the second loop, all the way back, Jim's starting to get a few bids, part of it just needs to be milled and overlaid. The estimates have come in on that anywhere from $60,000 up to $130,000. Let's see, Derek, he filled us in on some stormwater management plan in conjunction with Lake County and MNDOT for projects on Seventh Avenue and Fifth Street. I don't know if you want to touch on that, Derek, he's a little more wise on the most than I am.
Yeah, we were approached, the Lake SWCD was approached by the county engineer for Lake County, and he noted that there were, they struck two structures on the alignment that the county is going to be rebuilding, and he requested that the SWCD help them locate funding to implement the stormwater management plan that the city approved about a year and a half ago. Lake SWCD has already submitted a grant application for the dis improvement, so hopefully we can get part of the stormwater management plan implemented with the county's project.
Thank you, Derek. Then we also talked about maintenance of pollinator gardens, like, for example, by the library, they need to be maintained a little bit more, at least weed whacked down. There was some people said that Public Works would take care of it, previous Public Works directors, so we're just going to make them look a little nicer. We're always looking for volunteers, too, anybody that's in the garden can come and help clean, pull weeds out of those. It's official that the Emerald Ash Board is in Lake County, and what to do for that is, there'll be some training with the Public Works Department on April 26th or 27th. All you can do is chip, you can chip those, climb it on, chip them, it's fine, it kills it, or burn them. And then Public Works is just working, hopefully soon they'll be doing, creating some alleys, working on the cemetery, the sweeper should be out soon, we're just waiting for it to stop snowing and raining before we can get to all that. Patching potholes is hard, you know, but cleaning up parks, and then they move the brush from the fairy grounds, the fairy grounds roll it off to go burn it. They got a haul that way and then burn it somewhere else, so it's kind of a big process. That's everything we had at Public Works.
Thank you, Miles. Let's see, I'm going to do Personnel next, and we met last week. We reviewed the Public Works Director's position and the Assistant Public Works Director position interim. So we're going, those are both on the agenda for tonight. Let's see. We have a specialist three position out there that we're looking to get some help with the county on getting him signed up on greater experience. As Joel mentioned, we've been doing a lot of work reviewing the process that we will be going through, the steps involved in looking for and finally finding a new city administrator. We're getting a brochure, we're hoping to have the wage and benefit package reviewed by the negotiating committee, a review of the job description, and decide on other steps, including how we will manage the interview process. Kind of wanted to have all of that laid out by mid-May in hopes of putting this position out at the end of May for 30 days, looking at national searches, Wisconsin, Minnesota, MMUA, other places that we can think of. Joel has given us a lot of information, and we're really, I think we're going to, I think we're going to keep moving this forward, and Joel is anxious to be done with his new job. So that's pretty much everything we got through that. The Utilities Committee met, and they are meeting again on the 4th to review the Significant User Agreement with Casadejo Brewery. Joe did, Joe Ryan did talk to us and presented a document with regards to how to develop or whatever the property between the sewage treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And while it was a great document and there was a lot of information in there, that was tabled because we don't technically own that property yet, so that's just going to have to sit there for a little bit till we figure out what's going to happen next with the Ankrum property. We did talk about the wastewater treatment plant project and... We did talk about the wastewater treatment plant project, and they do have a spending allowance, and it was felt that as things come up, it would be much easier to be able to purchase those items on an ADNE basis rather than having to wait for a city council meeting to get approval. So we are going to allow them to use that, the, there is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that fund. So they can make purchases up to fifty thousand dollars without coming to the council, and then they need to present us with a monthly report on how that, those funds. And I think there was some stuff, I don't, there was a door they had to replace and a couple of miscellaneous things that they just needed, and it was one of those things where they needed to do it right away, so we're hoping to do that. And then Miranda had brought up the utility review and getting that done again, and were we, are you looking into that? I'm sorry, ask question.
For gas and electric, we're doing a utility rate study, and right now we're reaching out for quotes for some companies that will do that.
Look at those rates, okay. And I think that's all I have from Utilities and Personnel. Public Affairs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we did meet on the twenty-first, and we had a long agenda, and Robin had a lot of things that she presented, and it was great. So the status on public comment at city meetings and virtual attendance, we are waiting, we were gonna wait to hear back from Patty, and she is on vacation yet, for more details on where that is at. We looked at the process for reviewing the mayor's nominees for appointments, and that, we want to look at that process and also have Mr. Costley look that over, too. Tweak it as it's, you know, according to how it is in the charter, and have that looked into a little more detail. Also looking at membership requirements for certain boards and commissions, namely HRA, the Charter Commission, the Planning Commission, and the THETA. And as far as we wanna think about where folks are from and what they're representing when they are on those types of charters or commissions and boards. We looked at council members being appointed to committees and commissions by the mayor as citizen representatives. That, again, will be on Mr. Costley's desk, and he can look that over. And then our website update, how to make that be more communicative with the public. We're going to have Jose and Mr. Dine look at that, too, as far as how we can communicate better. The same with personnel and social media. Looking at all the conflict of interest policies, we discussed that. And our HRA, where we're putting that, or how HRA is functioning or not functioning at this point, and how we want to see if that's still going to be something that we just set aside. New business, we talked about the fireworks displays, they are a little more expensive this year, but we are going to still go ahead with that, and we believe it's a three-year contract, so that should be a good thing. And we also discussed the option of installing an electric car charger at the information center, so.
Jen, can I just make one correction? When we talked about the HRA, it wasn't the HRA, it was the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Project that the HRA has administered over the last, I don't know how many years, but they actually came before the council last October and said that they no longer wanted to be responsible for that program. We, as city councilors and administration, just have not found the right fit for that program. So at this point, we're taking names, information from people through City Hall when people are calling. If we can figure out where to put that project, we'll try and reconnect with those people. If we could get something put together by July, although we are all extremely busy with other projects, so, you know, you gotta, gotta weed through those, but we're hoping to find a place for it and bring it back. So I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause it wasn't the HRA, it was the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Program.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, that's my point.
And does a follow-up clarify?
Go ahead.
So, right now, we're saying there is not a program for this summer.
Correct.
I just, it made it kinda sound like maybe there would be, so I just.
Well, we're just taking, as Miranda said at the meeting, we're just taking information from people that are interested in applying for those up to five hundred dollar grants. We can't make any guarantees right now because we don't have all of the information on how to proceed. I gave her some of the requirements and the application forms that Tom and Judy Ospagin have used in the past, so I'm hoping to get somebody in the staff to look at those and we'll see, we'll see where it ends up. But for, for right now, all we can do is take names, names and numbers.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Was the county just matching that, or did they run their own end, or was HRA running all that? That ten thousand from the county that we usually got as well?
It would, I believe it was five and five.
Oh, okay.
And it became an issue because they had, we had to spend all the money, that, what we understood was just that all the money had to be spent before the county would reimburse for their half of the grant program. But HRA doesn't have the ability to just take money out of a slush fund, so that's where we kinda ran into a problem, so we're just, that's why, and it just needs to go somewhere else. So, that makes sense. As long as we're on HRA, I'll give you the HRA update because we met last week and reviewed the Code of Ethics and Conduct. We are working on a resident advisory board that we hope to get moving forward shortly. We are going to develop an ad hoc committee to work on housing projects and building projects. There is an opportunity for members of the board to attend a NARO training that is covered by the HRA, and fortunately, I believe there was only one member of the HRA that's able to attend that. And by June, we are going to need more members, we will be down to five. And that's that report, who'd I miss? Oh, Derek! North Shore Management Board.
Yeah, the North Shore Management Board met on April thirteenth and there was a presentation by Abby Finnis of the Greater Plains Institute on Climate Resilience in Minnesota. Some of the things that she came up with that kind of makes your jaw drop is expected air temperature increase in, on the North Shore by the end of the twenty-first century of three to four and a half degrees. And so, likely increased winds free from the lake, uncertainty on water levels. The other thing, there was a, there was an existing grant that's going forward on the erosion hazard zone. This is a online resource to assess the hazard from lake erosion of Lake Superior. It's currently being updated to include the entire shore rather than other places like Ninth River, Castle Danger areas where there has been a lot of erosion. There was also discussion about making sure that the North Shore Management Zone boundary made it to all maps, since it is kind of a odd boundary that's based on section lines. And there was a technical advisory group met talking about opportunities of one-war shed-one plan that are available to the North Shore Management area. And there was an informational discussion on short-term rentals and a comparison of what other cities and townships are doing, and counties are doing relative to short-term rentals, and that's where the discussion of Duluth Township's recent enactment of a short-term rental ordinance came up.
Thank you, and thank everybody for attending all the meetings that we get to attend. All right, moving on, we need a resolution to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Ryan, would you like to read those items in?
Okay, item number one, allowing claims against the city of Two Harbors to be paid on April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Approving payroll for the first half of April two thousand twenty-two. A communication from Joel Dine interim city administrator regarding city administrator recruitment. A communication from Caitlin Kodge regarding an open letter to Mayor Swanson. A communication from Jean A. Seewell regarding various city issues. A communication from John A. Christensen requesting evaluation of the potential of a bypass from the west outskirts of Two Harbors in downtown. Item number seven, accepting the proposal for Bolton Mink for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four street improvement project preliminary engineering services in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and three hundred, one, one fifty-six, three hundred. Accepting the recommendation of the Personnel Committee to promote Jim Gilbert to the Public Works Director position. Item number nine, accepting the recommendation of the Public Affairs Committee to hire J and M displays for the Monday, July fourth, two thousand twenty-two fireworks display. Number ten, accepting the recommendation to appoint Steve Aden to the Assistant Public Works Director position for an interim basis. Number eleven, authorizing to exclude the city administrator from the Minnesota Public Employees Retirement Association. Item number twelve, authorizing the city of Two Harbors, Minnesota, to elect the standard allowances available under the revenue loss provision of the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Is there any discussion from the council on any of these items? Not roll call?
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glazier?
Yes.
Renwal?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Okay, thank you very much. There is nothing under unfinished business, so moving on to new business. A resolution consenting to the issuance of the healthcare revenue bonds by the Duluth Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glazier?
Abstain.
Renwal?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Okay, and item number two, under, under new business, is the first reading of the ordinance of the city of Two Harbors, Minnesota, amending section four point four-two of the Two Harbor City Code concerning the short-term rentals.
So.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a few quite, few questions on it. Right now, Jen, do you know how long it is for the health inspection for the, for John, I believe his name is, to come and get the health inspection done?
Yep, he's a little far out because nobody, I think we had eight people out of our fifty-six permits that had inspections done. And so, they all went at once to him when we started talking about revising the ordinance and with the more trim. So I asked him if he would be done by June first, and he said no. As long as people are in contact with him by June first, we're gonna allow them to, to get their inspection.
And just like in the following years, don't you think this will be an annoying problem?
No, because we have a renewal date of, a strict renewal date of November first. By four-thirty, your application has to be at City Hall, or it's not gonna be accepted. And so, you'll have people coming forth, the permits are, I think those certificates are good for two years. And the first time he has to come to your house, he does a full plan review, he looks at everything. The next time he has to come, unless you have something that's, you know, your, your egress windows wouldn't have changed, or your sleeping rooms, or unless you did a major remodel, it's a very short-term renewal.
And then, is, is there some laws right now on renting your house out for thirty days or less? Isn't it state law that you can, without a permit?
Well, if you rent for less than thirty days, it's considered a short-term rental.
For less than thirty days?
Yeah.
Okay, I was confused on some of the information on that one, then. And just.
If it's longer than thirty days, you're considered a long-term rental.
And then, I just had some concerns with it not being transferable. Say, say if somebody does have a short-term rental, and they decide they don't wanna be in it anymore, and they can't transfer the business, wouldn't it just turn into a vacant property? If you can't, I mean, that's obviously what we want, though, too.
We want permanent residence, so if you can't, well, one, so we run into a couple.
Right, but it can't go back, once it's a business, it can't go back to residential.
That's also, Miles, that's only on Seventh, and so we made an exception to people on Seventh Avenue. So if you own a home on Seventh Avenue and you have a short-term rental right now, and you wanna sell your house, and that person only wants to buy it for a short-term rental, we're gonna exempt them from the cap, and that person will be able to apply for a permit regardless of what our number is at.
Yeah, I, I understand, I just think all, that's my personal opinion, is like, if you're gonna treat like a business, I think they should be transferable, that's something I'd like to see.
Miles, also, the health inspections are not transferable. So that's, that's, the state licensing is not transferable.
Right, I mean, you'd have to get it done again, I understand.
Yeah, and when we get into, if we want to compare apples to apples, and they want to be considered businesses and follow our business side, our commercial code, then we run into things like commercial property taxes and commercial utility rates, and following our actual code when it comes to commercial businesses, which is a lot stricter than our short-term rental code.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a tricky issue, I, I, that's just, that's my personal opinion, I'd like to see the cap number higher, like, more, more around a hundred. I'm a firm believer in, I think people should be able to do what they, they please with their property, it is, I think it's, you should be free to do what you want, it's, it's America. If you, I think all these people with the short-term leases have worked very hard, and they're risking their own money, they're, they also have a lot to lose. I, I, I think the real issue here is Two Harbors, for the last few years, we've, we, we need to put something together to bring developers in, something that's much more intriguing for them, whether it be tax abatement. We gotta get infrastructure and somewhere and find a place for people to build. Even, even if we built on every available lot in Two Harbors right now, there's still a housing shortage. And so, I think the city has to take some responsibility on that of building some more housing, and that's my main focus going forward, is to get some more housing in here, because I think, I think that's the main issue, in my opinion. I'm not saying that this, that short-term rentals isn't an issue at all, but I, I think there's some better solutions to it.
Thank you, Miles.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
One thing that I heard loud and clear in every presentation is that we have a shortage of housing. And whether it was THETA discussions, whether it was planning and zoning, and even the city, if you remember in September, I believe it was, we met and said that number one concern we have is getting new housing inventory. Now, I just got a newspaper article here, I can't remember if we spoke to it, but this is a major problem throughout the state. And while I'm very supportive of a cap, I still am wanting to see us as a city focusing on the actual bigger issue, which is we've gotta get houses or an opportunity for developers to build. And so, as I look at it, for me personally, a cap for me is concerning if it's a number. And here's what I, what I mean by that. I, I think a percentage is really important, because that still motivates the opportunity. If we add, say we make it like a four percent or five percent max. If we, if we do that and we add more housing units, I know there is some discussion about some apartment complexes being built, that would allow for us to still satisfy the people who are, are really interested in making sure these houses are rented out, but also still give us the opportunity to solve some of our community issues with housing. I am, I did not know about this, but as I'm thinking about it, and I heard something about homestead tax classification, I thought that through, I think that is absolutely a good idea, and here's why. I'd heard that Duluth has that, and maybe somebody can clarify it. We keep talking about Duluth's numbers, but if you live in your home and you wanna make a little extra income with an inspection, I think everybody here is very aware, keenly aware of that state law, so we want safety and inspection. But with that, I think that's a great opportunity, because it's not taking away from anybody, because it's, it's a potential, so in homestead, you have to, I know the laws, you have to be in that property, you can't just, like, circumvent it. It's a tax classification, so pretty, pretty powerful things. I'm a little worried about this idea and commercial properties that it's only exempt on the Seventh Avenue corridor. The reason is, is as you look at what the state has moved towards, they actually created a special tax classification, a terminology. And so, what the state is doing is they're saying, no, we understand that this is an issue. But what they've done, then, is through that tax classification, they've kinda said it's a lodging facility, it's gonna be inspected like a lodging facility, and so therefore, it's a lodging facility. And so, my take on it is, the use within our commercial zoning, we can always change the commercial zoning, but the use within our existing commercial zoning should really allow for lodging facilities. I think that's the intent, and I think that's the intent on the Seventh Avenue corridor, whether those houses are gone completely, or whether people convert them from single family to actual places where people can do business or stay. One big clarification, I've talked to a lot of people that assume that if you advertise on a short-term rental, that you are a short-term rental, and I wanna be really crystal clear, there's a lot of hotels there's a lot of hotels now that are advertising on short-term rentals, and the reason is, is there's millions of eyeballs. I think Duane eloquently spoke to the fact that there's millions of people working for these facilities. So the hotels are even using the short-term rental sites, even though they're totally classified, uh, as commercial. So just be aware of that, this kind of is the point of the information. Um, let's see, um, I'm a little concerned about the backlog of inspection. I think that can hurt people if we're going through this process. I wanna make sure that there is a limitation on that, or a timeframe where we expect that inspection to incur, or incur by. Um, the other thing I wanna make sure we're doing is, is really thinking about future development. Again, I started out the conversation with housing. Um, just had the opportunity to go and spend some time in Florida, and actually spoke with one of the developers there, because they're building in Florida, it's unbelievable, the housing shortage there is massive. When they're doing development projects, I don't know if everybody knows the cost of development now, but it is so high, like it's so crazy, um, that an average house that you and I probably would think should be like a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars is worth like two hundred and fifteen thousand. So the problem the developers have is when they go to develop a property and take just brand-new development, they are asking for a percentage of short-term rentals in those developments, because they can sell those homes for a higher value, which allows for that development to be successful financially, because of the inflated cost of building. Um, and that kinda speaks to this article, if anybody's interested, it's in Minnesota Housing Industry News, and it's, "Growing Coalition Calls for Legislation to Address Zoning Reform." And it's speaking, in the next article, "State Housing Inventory Continues Its Downward Spiral." Um, but this is interesting, they're talking about zoning reform, and it's bipartisan, which is always important to, to note, and it's really speaking to the fact that what they're trying to do is see more dense-type housing development. So allowing for density, even in residential applications, why is that important? Density allows the developer to build these at not necessarily less cost per square foot, but able to do common wall and shared, shared walls and things like that, which can significantly cut the cost of that home downward, it can become more affordable. Um, I thought there was a lot, lot of great points made tonight, and this is definitely something in front of us that's, that's a challenge, but I think it's, uh, really great that we're kinda going through and thinking it through. Um, I think, uh, I heard you, Councilor Woodruff, talk about transferability. I think because we're in this situation now, I think I would, uh, support that, where it's allowed to be transferred, I don't know why it couldn't be, um, and in the sale of it, because if somebody bought that now at this point, and they're running a short-term, it's kinda hard to tell them, well, now you can't sell it as a short-term. Um, so I think that might be something that, that I would support. Um, big concern that I'm hearing, a lot of this is coming from people, I've gotten a lot of, a lot of messages, both for and against on this, but, um, one of the big questions is, can we please have a draft of exactly the process we should expect, the notifications that we should expect, how the renewal process works, um, to make sure that it's crystal clear? And I would of course recommend you set the fee here at the council level, I wanna make sure, anytime we're charging fees, that those are fair. Um, I, I did hear, I believe it was Holly spoke to, um, the density concerns of planning and zoning, and I know this kind of like default addresses density concerns, because there's this cap, but I, I think it's, uh, uh, probably gonna address her issue, but I don't know if it does specifically. Um, obviously, if we say it's not allowed in residential at all in the future, um, I think that, that might kind of be an issue because of the fact that we're gonna wanna see more housing built, and when that happens, I think a percentage of the, a large percentage of it to be short-term rental, that would be a good thing. Um, so it's kind of, you know, it's trying to cover both grounds and make this really fair for everybody involved. Um, my big thing is, is we have a planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday, the third, and the questions here are wonderful. My hope is that we could move forward tonight, uh, with this recommendation, but get some of these answers that I know are very specific from planning and zoning, to kinda get their feedback. Um, for example, um, you know, the whole percentage, uh, I, I just like that better than a number, and I have looked at some communities, and it seems like that's a little more of a popular approach, because I'm sure they're, they're looking at the same thing, like more homes being built and such. Uh, so that would be something I would propose, we could keep moving at the same speed, it went slow thing down, because the third is coming up very quickly, and it's right between our meetings, I think this has been a really, uh, big team effort to kinda put this all together. Uh, so that, that's my, there's, I think I covered everything. Um, but, uh, great, again, thank you for the, the kind and, and, uh, great dialogue, it was, was excellent, all the information I heard tonight, so thank you.
Kathy, go ahead.
First, I just wanted to check to see if Jen wanted to clarify a few things before I have to comment.
Thank you, Councilor Erickson. So I'd just like to ask, what is left of the ordinance that Planning Commission worked on for five months? Everything that we've changed? Mayor Swanson, you mentioned, you don't like it, and you wanna see it changed. Everybody has, so I'd like to ask, what is left of this ordinance? Um, because you basically left nothing to this. Um, second of all, I just wanna say, if you wanna go by a percentage, I would be all for that. Duluth does a percentage, they, the first year they had seventy, then they, they had sixty, then they capped it at seventy, and then now it's at eighty. They up it, um, based on ten percent of the housing, the units that are created the year before. Two Harbors has had three new houses in the last, like, five years. So if you wanna go by a percentage, we would have zero new short-term rentals for a long time. And you made a great point, the cost of construction right now is through the roof. Between labor and materials, nobody can afford to build right now, and that's what's going on. Developers cannot afford to build and still sell that home at an affordable price. So, um, I'd also like to just say something else, um, in regard to Mr. Polly's situation. Um, the communication part of it, this is part, we have, we have a method for where we advertise our stuff for public hearings, um, we have our website. If you, the city does not individually notify every single person, that's not our job, we have a code, you see in the code right now, it tells you exactly what you need to do, um, when you have to have your renewal invite. Um, this is not the city's responsibility to keep track of all these people. Um, it was one of the questions that I answered in the dialogue, if we don't have enough staff to implement what we have at the current cap, we have at the current fifty-six permits, then we need to start, um, putting more responsibility on the people who have the permits. The short-term rental permits are an interim use, they're, they're not a right in the city, they're a privilege. You need to follow the rules, you need to follow the regulations, it's up to you, just like every other city code, to know what the code is. And that's the only thing I'm gonna say the rest of the meeting, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thanks to everybody that has spoken, sent letters, had conversations, um, similar to others in the council, I have appreciated, uh, the feedback. Um, wanna be clear about the process, so tonight is a first reading, um, we have an opportunity to potentially amend or edit at a second reading, which would be two weeks from now, if the Planning and Zoning Commission were to come back with any recommended changes, otherwise, would it be our expectation that this would come back as a second reading? Um, and then at that point, there are no changes, and we would be voting up or down that, that specific, uh, ordinance. Just wanna make sure that everybody's, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I appreciate that there are people that have different opinions, um, but we're a collective, and we have to make decisions together. Um, I take very seriously the work of committees and commissions, and having this coming from planning and zoning is important to me, um, and if this was a recommendation of that group and that, um, department that's been head by Jen Stravens, um, I guess I'd want to hear from them, if they're still, after hearing what they heard tonight, getting the same correspondence as we as counselors have received, if there is an interest or a, a recommended change, or if coming back to us at a second reading that the ordinance would stay the same. So I guess I would be, um, interested, because it does sound like we do have a meeting prior to our next council meeting, um, so that we would hear that if there are any changes. So, and then just wanna, just appreciate the work of planning and zoning, appreciate the work of Jen Stravens, um, Tim Costley, our city administrators, and others who have been a part of this process. As was mentioned, this is not something that just came together, this has been months and months of discussion and, and process. Um, I'm appreciating hearing from folks and understanding that hopefully these, um, questions or concerns that we heard tonight and from others, um, get vetted through planning and zoning, and, um, if there's things that need to be addressed, they can be, but, um, I look forward to having that come back at our next council meeting, uh, whether it's the same or amended, so thank you.
Kathy, I'd like to just, um, take a moment to respond to what, um, a couple of things that Kathy had said. Um, the Planning Commission was presented that, this document on April fifth, and we had, um, very little time to, um, review some of the things. There were multiple questions at that particular meeting. Um, there were, there's a lot of questions that were asked that I think still need to be answered by the group that presented, by the citizens that presented this evening. Um, I, I can myself have ten items that, um, would, I would prefer to have reviewed by the Planning Commission, um, before this goes before, um, the second reading. Um, the other, the other thing that I want to address is with regards to, um, the issue of, of the ten, the, the mailing part of the certificates and the permits, because, um, in my, in my job as a nurse, we took an envelope and mailed it to, back to ourselves to find out how long it would take to go from Two Harbors down to the cities, back to Two Harbors, and then get to that person. We mailed three of them, all on the same day, one was seven days, one was ten days, one was twelve days. So in going through all of this, in my mind, I'm thinking that we can't expect snail mail to get certificates to and from, um, people in a timely manner, so, and it could be an easy situation where you just simply use certified mail. But I think that, that more importantly, I think we need to clean up some of the language with regards to how do we, how do we process, um, the permit if somebody has already contacted the, um, inspector, maybe the inspector's done the inspection, but there's things that need to be fixed or remediated, you know, how do, there, that language isn't extremely clear in here on, on, do, is there, is there a window of opportunity to still get your permit or not? And that needs to be talked about and discussed, because just from what Jen said, with the inspector being out months, I mean, you can't expect everybody to get it done all at once. So I just know that at the, at the last meeting, um, Planning Commission meeting, I just felt that there was, there were way too many questions that were asked and not answered, um, as this was moved forward to the council. Um, I would certainly recommend that we, um, allow for the first reading, but I would strongly recommend that this go back to the Planning Commission. Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, I, I would just, I, I agree with your comments, Robin. I do know that it was kind of rushed coming, trying to make it, uh, to this council meeting, and there were some things that were left undone. Um, I know that the exemption of the, uh, homes along Seventh Avenue was one of these, and that was, uh, rectified, however, um, I feel that, um, the question is, there are fifteen PRBO, or short-term rentals, that are in a business district, and if we wanna build that number to forty, we can ill afford to lose any of those fifteen. Um, yes, there are forty in the short, the residential zonings, those, it is our goal to eliminate them, and I fully, uh, support that, uh, but I feel as if we should have some mechanism to transfer, uh, the short-term rental permits in the business zone districts to give them the opportunity to maintain a short-term rental in the business districts, uh, so we can preserve those fifteen that we have. Uh, that's, that's, including the seven that are already along Seventh Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've been listening to, to all of this, and, and I've had many phone calls today, and emails, and, um, everything on the topic of short-term rental, and I, um, appreciate very much, um, all that you guys have shared here tonight from, um, all different opinions, and I think the one thing that maybe somehow isn't as prominent as I would like it to be is the housing issue, and I know the mayor spoke to it, and I think this wouldn't be a problem if we did have some sort of means, and we really, really dug in as hard as we have been looking at short-term rentals, if we dug in as hard on seeing what we can do about utilities, about getting development here, getting some houses, apartments, assisted living, all those kinds of things going. And I have on my desk at work a newspaper article from the early nineties that says Two Harbors has a housing problem, and that was years ago, and no one has done anything about it, and now short-term rentals are here, and still nothing has ever happened with the housing. And to me, that is the bigger problem. I think the transferable, or a percentage, not a number, all of that would actually probably go away if we had enough doors, um, for our residents to, to, to live in, and our kids to stay here, and our employees to be able to live here and work here. So, um, I do think it does, I, I appreciate what Counselor Glazier said, is that we do have some things to look at, um, some details on it, that, um, we should look closer into as far as how this ordinance reads, and I just wanted to get my opinion there and let me know where I'm at. Um, I, I can go with it being a reading for tonight, but I think, um, I would like to see it go back to, to planning as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, we love the topic of housing. I would like to clarify that nothing has not been, that, that comment just struck me, because the amount of housing and development we've had since the nineties, um, we've had past Sixteenth Avenue, we have in Seagull, we have in the new, I mean, there has, there has been additional housing since, so I, I would like to clarify that we have not gone nowhere, um, since the nineties, so I appreciate that. But I, I do think that the onus is on us as a council. We, we do a lot of lip service to housing, but we need to, we need to start putting our team together, we need to start meeting regularly, we need to start bringing our teams together, and we talked about that, but we haven't really formulated what that's gonna look like, and I guess I'd really like to see us do something about that, so that we're, we're gonna do more. And I think part of that is just understanding the reality and getting a one-on-one, and I don't know if that's something Joel wants to help us with, um, but to get us to the, to the complexity, to the mayor's point of the things that we're reading and, and the communities that we're, um, hearing about and, and are part of ourselves. And so, um, going back to this part of the discussion related to this first reading, um, I would support moving forward with the first reading. I really appreciate the comments, and I think we have a Planning and Zoning Commission that is set to meet again and can take up, um, some of the questions and concerns that folks have, um, and moving forward, if, if we do see a changed or revised ordinance based on discussion or not, um, I will be, uh, looking forward to what the Planning and Zoning that Jen Stravens brings back forward to us in two weeks.
But the motion, uh, that's currently on the floor is to con, consider this as the first reading, so if you want it referred back to planning, there would have to be an amendment to the ordinance, and I don't remember if we made the-
Counselor Glazier, can I say something?
Of course.
Um, so I just wanna point out that this discussion about this being rushed, this council set that moratorium, you set a three-month moratorium to expire on May fifteenth. You gave us three months to work on this. So to say that it was rushed, there's a reason it's being rushed, is because that's all the time that we had. Once that moratorium expires, you open up the floodgates, and then what are we gonna do with all those applications that are coming in? What are we gonna do with them? We don't have a plan in place for that, we don't know what regulations we have going on. You know, I'm, I feel like every time we have something that comes from one of my committees, it's being sent back to the committee. The Planning Commission worked very hard on this. We have heard all of this same feedback, these same people have been at our meetings as well. And I know that we're gonna do a first reading tonight, I understand that, I understand that we can come back and do a second reading, um, but you guys are the ones that set this date, not me.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm confused, and maybe, um, Counselor or Attorney Costley, we don't, we can do a first reading and independently, the Planning and Zoning can take up any issues without us having to revise a motion, correct? We don't, we don't have to re-refer this, they can just put it on their agenda without being us reading. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may, you know, this is a big issue, and so, you know, while I know there was a timeline, I think there were, you know, also along the way, I think there were some bumps in the road, and things didn't happen quite the way we thought they would, but this doesn't slow anything down. I think this is an opportunity to make sure that everybody's heard, and one of the things I'm learning about this process is you just, in these kinds of issues, it's really important that everybody gets a chance to be heard. I heard a few new things tonight, and, and that was really valuable stuff that we heard tonight, so. And again, what I keep hearing consistently, thank you councillor Erickson, too, it's, it's, you know, that, that idea that we have to really be serious about housing. I know we don't build the housing, I'm going to clarify that, the city doesn't actually build the housing, but I mean, we have raw land in this community, we have utilities, and I heard earlier we may even have some dollars, and I've heard Lake County has dollars for housing. So, let's focus on, one of the speakers said it's really hard to get any housing for people who are in need, or they're in situations, emergency situations, and so on. Let's focus on it, let's all come together, Planning and Zoning, EDA, City Council, the community, you know, I think we're hearing loud and clear this time, and I'm ready, I think everybody here in the council, and just different discussions with you, you're all ready for this. And Joel, you get to, I'm sorry, Administrator Dine, thank you for being here, you get to be the person that maybe thinks this through and, and kind of guides us on the process, so thank you.
Councilor Glazer, I just want to say one more thing, I promise we last thing. So I'd be, we know the areas that we have that are vacant properties. Councilor Passy and I have looked at a lot of these, because we wanted to see what kind of topography was there. Even at Antonage Field, we know in a lot of these areas, we cannot do regular city blocks. So I would be really curious to see how many houses we could actually put up, given the topography of the land that we have. We know in Seagull, too, that there is not, you can't do city blocks there. We, we looked at it before and we saw where you could put housing and how many we could get in there. So that's one thing. Another thing I want you to think long and hard about is that we do not own properties like the Johnny Johnsons, so if a cash buyer comes along, that 16 city block, 16 city lots right there, so to speak, if a cash buyer comes along and wants to knock down that school and doesn't need the city's help for anything, they can put up 16 duplexes there, and you'll see 32 short-term rentals pop up right in that Johnny Johnson property. And I have heard this proposal come forth already. There's another one up by the high school as well, those people are talking about, the old high school, short-term rentals, so I just want you to know, for the amount of housing that you could probably get in, in Two Harbors, on the vacant property that we have right now, you're going to see many, many more short-term rentals, and as Mayor Swanson said, people need to recoup their costs fast, they're going to do those as short-term rentals to recoup some of those costs before somebody will live in there.
Okay, and I, and I, I get where we're going as far as the need for housing. We've been anticipating the, the Maxfield study coming back to the council and the HRA, so that some project can be moved forward on. I guess the, the issue that we need to take up right now is the first reading of this ordinance, and if the council chooses to send this resolution as it's stated, then I believe there needs to be a second resolution to ask the Planning Commission to look at the questions that have been put before us, because if we don't, then we're not going to get an answer. So there-
Madam Chair, I think, yes, I, I agree with you, so do you want us to vote on this or do we get the motion?
If that's what you choose to do, I, sorry, I really can't remember who the first and the second were.
Yeah, I'm sorry, councillor, I see myself.
If we would like, if you guys want to vote on this, we could. Okay. Then the last verbal call.
Woodruff?
No.
Swaye Sher?
Who are you voting for?
Yes.
Rick Waugh?
No.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if you can make a motion that we make sure the questions are put forward to Planning and Zoning for the next city council meeting?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Go ahead.
May?
Absolutely. I'm going to do this for a minute.
Thank you. Then I would ask that council members individually email to me their questions, and I will compile those and get them to the Planning Commission.
And I also want to remind the council that while it's typical that an ordinance would come back in, at the next council meeting, it isn't necessary if we need to hold that second reading off. I guess the way that I'm looking at it right now is, yes, we have the moratorium, and we said that we wanted it done by such and such a date, but if there's still questions that need to be answered, then I think we're better off doing our due diligence than just worrying about what happens next, considering everything that Jen's told us about the, the health inspector and all these other things, it doesn't sound to me like we're going to be handing out 75 permits in the next four weeks, so. And I, so that's just where I'd like to leave that. So is there any other discussion with regards to the mayor's motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, that ends everything under new business. Is there announcements or other things people would like to add to tonight's fun and games? Go ahead.
I'm going to let Joel go first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to inform the council that we received a call today from an anonymous citizen who wanted to compliment the Public Works Department and say thanks for patching pot holes in the area of 17th Street and 7th Avenue.
Thank you. Dirk, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I do. We had Earth Day last weekend, it was supposed to be on Saturday, however, due to weather concerns, it was changed to Sunday. We had an outstanding turnout, we had 32 people from the community, and were able to not, not only clean up Burlington Bay and Agate, Burlington Beach and Agate Bay, but all the waterfront in between, the campground, the curling club, the hospital, hockey arena, and the skate park, and, and the manchon. So, thank you, everybody, for participating.
Is there anything else that we need to address this evening? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, and we are adjourned.